Never know sometimes until it's. They don't have to sign up ahead of time.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the planning and zoning meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth. If we can get a roll call?
Ms. Austin?
Here.
Mr. Montiel?
Here.
Mr. Ruddle Lopez is absent. Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Mr. Martinez? Ms. Keys is absent. Mr. Kaplan is absent and Chair Collin, or Chair Hagerty, excuse me.
Here, we also have David.
Oh, I'm sorry, David. Thank you for that. I didn't have you. I apologize. Mr. Renson?
Here.
I apologize. We have a quorum.
Okay, the next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from a long time ago, July sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions, comments on the minutes?
I noticed that, I think it was massage is not allowed as a home occupation. I don't recall that being discussed last time, but can you remind me why that was not allowed?
Do you have a correction to the minutes? I'm sorry.
I don't know that it's a correction necessarily. I just don't recall the discussion about not allowing massage as a home occupation, and it seems like a slightly odd one to not allow, since it doesn't seem that wild.
Is that in the minutes? I don't believe. Because we try to keep it a little more basic, so that's not part of the minutes. It's just that, yeah.
It was beyond that.
Yep, okay, so part of the discussion, which we can absolutely talk when, yeah. So any other questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, would like to motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
And if we could call for a vote.
Ms. Austin?
I'm staying.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Nancy, public forum, don't see any, any online?
None online.
All right, then we can just move right along to open the public hearing. And in that case, I think we get to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
A second.
And if we could vote on case two thousand and twenty-four dash oh one, Home Occupations and Natural Medicines.
Okay, Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so staff report, thanks.
Yeah, there we go. I'm so good at remembering.
I'm sorry, let me start again. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Please state your name and position.
Yeah, Will Charles, planner two. I'm very good at remembering to always wait to swear myself in before starting talk on these, so. Yeah, so just one thing before we get started, so as you'll probably notice on the staff report and on a couple of other things, there's a couple of extra words added to the end of these for natural medicines. So Brian will get into why those were added, but the kind of short of it is that there's some overlapping sections that they're both in, which is why they're being brought together as one thing, so that way we're not editing stuff and then coming back and re-editing the exact same thing over again. But they'll be split into two different things, so if you have any questions about that section, Brian will come up, sorry, Brian will come up after me and talk about that portion. But getting into the home occupation section, so where we are in the schedule right now is obviously this public hearing to kind of go over what the actual regulations ended up looking like. So this started back in May with a study session with city council, and then also a meeting in June with this group, as well as multiple neighborhood nights meetings, and then another group study session with the commission in July. And then since then, we've been working on the updates to the ordinance, which is in your packet, and we'll kind of go over what those ended up looking like. So the first very simple change to the code is the permitted use table. We added home occupations as accessory use in the additional four districts they were prohibited in before. This was mainly just for those, you know, apartments or legal non-conforming uses in the industrial districts. Those now are also allowed to have home occupations if they're in a residence as well. Getting into the performance standards, we added in a portion that clarifies that remote work is a permitted use. This was always permitted, it's just a little clearer in the code now. From feedback from the commission, we also increased the number of non-residents that can work at the home occupations from one up to two. Then as far as location, now you can also do any home occupation in the rear yard of the property, and we included a screening requirement of a six-foot-tall solid privacy fence. And then the interior stays, stayed the same as far as only using fifty percent. For traffic, this was bumped up from those eight customer visits a day to twelve. Sorry, one second. All right, yeah, so from those eight customer visits a day to twelve, as well as having two at a time rather than one, it's just a slight increase on both of those to allow for a little more, a little more customer interaction with these home occupations. And then additionally, a carve-out was added for group classes to have up to four at a time. So that would, you know, go along with that twelve customer visits. You could have, you know, three groups of four, four groups of three, whatever, whatever order you want to equal up to that twelve a day. Oh, and then lastly, on the traffic, it was clarified a little as well as far as the garage driveway or street directly in front of the dwelling, just to soften it up a little bit so that, you know, if you park, say, you know, your, your, your spaces right in front of your house are taken, but, you know, perhaps they park, you know, a little bit down the street, that's also okay. There was additionally, an added one for animal grooming uses. So there is a section in chapter seven that deals with the number of animals that can be on, on premises for just, you know, anybody who is owning pets. And so that's those three dogs, three cats, no more than four total. So we just kind of referenced that section to be the, the cap limit for these, these animal-related uses. So if you had, you know, two dogs of your own, you could have one animal grooming dog there. If you had, you know, one dog of your own, you could have two, and kind of keeping in line with what the rest of the code says. Getting into the sales, the main thing that was changed on this one is that second half, which is the indoor and outdoor sales permitted. So this allows for those temporary stands that we discussed at the previous meeting. And we took a, took a look at other codes in the area. This is pretty similar to what theirs are, where these temporary stands have to come in each night. You can have them on, you know, the weekends, so we did put Friday, Saturday, Sunday for that. And then there was also just a minor clarification on these mail order sales, so that would be your, like, Mary Kay, Amway, so those kind of things where you could, you know, you can store your, your materials onsite and then, you know, do those businesses like you would, you know, going to other people's homes and selling them. So it was just a minor clarification about the kind of storage component of those. Then there was no changes on these equipment or signage's. All right, so getting into prohibited use list, this is one we've kind of talked about a lot, and we also talked a decent amount with other departments in the city as far as how this would affect their regulations as well. So for the animal grooming businesses, we were proposing moving those off that list, so those would be allowed. But all of the other kind of animal uses, which are more of like the hospital and, you know, doggy daycare, you know, long-term stay animal kind of uses, are still on that prohibited use list, but the dog grooming businesses, which seemed to be the one that everyone was much more in favor of, coming off the list. The next one, and this was, Mr. Renson, your question earlier about massage uses. So the rest of that one is the barbers, hairdressers, cosmetologists, and beauticians. These all in the ordinance are taken out of the list. The one that is still on there is massage uses. This was kind of a sensitive topic, one with a lot of other departments, specifically related to, you know, human trafficking and those kind of concerns. So they would prefer that stayed on this list, which, you know, I think we can all agree that that's, you know, not, not a, you know, something we want to open ourselves up to. So that's why that one stayed on the list, but all the other ones came off. But we can talk about that if you'd like. The next one is another clarification one, so this is food and beverages services, where we specifically called out that, you know, all those related to cottage food businesses are allowed. The next one also was kind of a clarification one, but this is related to, you know, your, your landscape company, your, your, you know, your group who has one large trailer, specifically having a carve-out that says you're allowed to have, you know, one of those large vehicles related to your business. And then we reference that back to chapter eleven, where it kind of details out the, the size and weight requirements and that kind of stuff for those vehicles. And then, as I mentioned, there are also these natural medicine changes. So this one was added to the prohibited use list. As far as the kind of wording on that one goes, it's very similar to what the marijuana-related uses are as far as on the prohibited use list. It, it pretty much mirrors what that one says. And then as far as our chapter two changes to the code, we added a new section that relates back to those performance standards, where if someone wants to apply for an exception to those standards, it's a format for them to be able to do that. So they couldn't ask for something to be removed from the prohibited use list through that special exception, but they could get more leniency on the performance standards themselves. All right, so these chapter two, so this is where, you know, things like conditional uses, variances, those procedures for all those live. As far as the changes, the majority of it is very similar to how conditional use permits are handled. So they go through a city review, through our development review team or pre-application meeting. And then from there, you know, staff and our departments will give recommendations or, you know, state concerns regarding the use or the, the special exception. And then the property will be posted and also published in the, the paper, letting you know that there's a public hearing. It'll come before this board or this commission, where you'll, you'll all be able to make a determination on whether to allow that special exception or not. And then appeals would be heard through city council. And then also that last one, so if that person chose to, you know, pack up and move on, that special exception would expire, similar to a lot of our waiver processes. So again, these review criteria, so these would be the, the criteria that you all would review the special exception based on. And these, again, are based a lot on what our conditional use permits ones are, since these processes are fairly similar. So the first one being, you know, relation to the conference of plan. The second one being, you know, it's kind of that, that nuisance catch-all requirement, you know, not creating adverse impacts on neighboring properties. The next one is, you know, the city staff recommendation. And then the last one is whether any additional site or use specific conditions are necessary to ensure the, these criteria are met. So kind of related back to those, the other ones in allowing you to make those exceptions. But that's it for this, this half of the presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, on one of the first slides there, under the number of employees, the proposed occupation, the proposed side says two additional non-residents. Does that just mean two non-residents? Or did we intend for there to be three employees?
Yeah, so two, two people that don't live in that house and then anybody that lives at the residence.
It mainly, do I need to be sworn in real quick?
Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Please state your name and position.
Brian Isom, planning manager. It's mainly there to, or the words additional are mainly there to specify there has to be a resident associated with the business. So you have to have the resident plus two. That's kind of what we're getting at, is you can't just have two people that don't live there running a business in a house that they don't live in. It has to be, so a resident plus the two.
Got it.
And I have, well, I'll take it.
Yeah, I just wanted, I had a question about the, the appeals process. I just want to make sure I understand this. So first, they have to get a public hearing before planning and zoning, and they have to appeal before the city council? Is that right?
So appeals are, so this, this board would be the final determination. If for some reason someone from the public or that, that person themselves found that there was, you know, that the decision was incorrect, they could appeal it to city council. Similar to how in any of our other processes work, there's always an appeal section, whether it's to city council or courts, depending on which one it is.
Michelle?
Yes, the, the revision from eight customers a day to twelve, that's a fifty percent increase, which is pretty significant. What was the discussion around that?
Yeah, so a lot of that, you know, came during our July meeting with this commission. I think the main portion of that, a lot of it came from the group classes and things like that, where you're going to have, you know, if you had a group of four potentially, that's, that's three classes a day. So that was a large portion of it. And I think it was just that, you know, that number hadn't really been looked at, but I'll let any of your other commissioners go if they want to defend the answer.
I'll jump in. I mean, we, we did have a lot of vigorous discussion about that and that number, and I think that was what we ended on. I think some wanted more, some wanted less, and we decided that twelve was the nice even number that made sense. Did you have additional, Brenda?
No, mention, can mention for Michelle about the yoga class. We talked about class size, is why that, it's not that you're selling a lot of things and you want all these people there at the same time. I think that's only why we came down on that, to that number.
There, there was a, a lot of thought put into it. Again, I mean, I think this is part of the things that we can discuss tonight, but I think that's the number that we, we settled on was twelve seemed like the, the reasonable number for the full day and then no more than four in a group class or two customers at a time.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Aaron?
Yeah, I have a couple here, but massage therapy, I mean, I assume human trafficking is still illegal and slave labor is still illegal and sex work is still illegal. I just really don't get the massage therapy staying on the prohibited list.
I agree, because, you know, they're going to be doing it under the radar anyways if they're trying to do something illegal. It would almost be better that you have to register if you want to run that as a home business, and then at least the city's aware of who is registered versus, hey, my neighbor reports that someone's running a business, is this registered? And they say, oh, it's not. It doesn't make sense to me either.
From a planning standpoint, the last thing that we want to do is put our police department in a position to where it might be more difficult for them or business licensing to track any illicit activities by saying, hey, now you can do this inside your home. So that, that's one of the major reasons why I think that one's left off.
Yeah.
Been a lot of council discussion about that at land use, specifically, I think, last year around May.
It seems a bit arbitrary. I mean, you could talk, say the same things about photography or yoga or, you know, lots of other things. So it just seems arbitrary. And from my perspective, keeping the arbitrary things out of the code is preferential.
Good. Or Brian, did you have additional thought there? Did you have additional thought there?
No, I have no other thoughts. I'm just stating why we chose not to put it in there.
Appreciate that.
You guys can recommend to add it. I mean, we just have to provide our inputs on why.
I think it's a degree, it just seems like preferential treatment for some businesses versus to others that are not that different. And also, keep in mind that there's plenty of massage therapists who offer in-home service at your house, and so it doesn't really seem all that different. And I don't know how you track either one of them to say, is it good or bad? But it seems like it potentially puts someone who's trying to use their massage ability as their, you know, job, makes it harder for them to do that.
Chair, I'm sorry, city attorney, I'd like to weigh in.
Yes, Sergio, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Martinez, just, I'm not sure if Tony was aware of this, but House Bill twenty-fourth thirteen seventy-one passed this year, and it's entitled more uniformed local massage facility regulations. So the state is, still allows counties and municipalities to regulate massage facilities, but they're imposing certain regulations that aren't currently in our code. And one of those regulations is that we consult with the county and see how they're going to regulate massage facilities. So there is additional regulations that are coming down the pipeline that we just haven't implemented yet.
If that's directed at massage facilities, would that also be applicable to a home-based business?
Without reading the entire context of the massage facility bill, I don't know how to define it, but I'm assuming that it involves any kind of massage-type business.
And I was going to have a similar question. What do other surrounding communities have, do we know, on the regulations for at-home?
The majority of the ones that I can recall only allowed, they weren't specific to have a broad statement like, you know, personal services. They would just allow haircuts, barber shops, salons. It didn't say that they allowed massage therapy or expressly, not necessarily expressly prohibited.
This is didn't prohibit.
But not necessarily that they allow it. We just chose to stay within the language that we had already had in our ordinance, just by removing those few uses and including that one.
And I mean, where I was thinking maybe would be like, at least a variance option to, if somebody wants to have at home, like, they would have to come in and, and request that.
Yeah.
Maybe an option, yeah.
I mean, as, as written in the code right now, it's, it's, if it's on the prohibited use list, you couldn't ask for the special exception.
Right, but we've changed, what, what are the ones that need a variance?
So, yeah, so we can't, for, for any portions of our code, you can't ask for variances for use-related reasons. So if a use is prohibited, it's prohibited. So if you, if you wanted to, you know, to allow these, it would be better to take it off that list.
He's talking about the schedule two or whatever that was where.
The special exception is there in, in, for instances where they don't meet the eight performance criteria. Say, maybe you need thirteen customers a day. You would have to come to this board to say, hey, can I have thirteen customers rather than the twelve? It's a lot, it's there to allow a little bit of flexibility, but not to where you could come in and say, okay, I want to do one of these prohibited uses. Even on our regular zoning code, that is completely not allowed. The Board of Adjustment is who hears our variance cases, and the Board of Adjustment cannot hear a case for a use variance that's considered illegal. So we can't do any kind of use variance. The only thing they can do is alter those performance criteria.
And so like the animal groomers, barber's hairdressers, those have all been moved to allowable uses? Michelle?
I'd, I'd be supportive in striking massage and allowing them in, in the city of Inglewood. I think that that's appropriate. I'd rather see somebody next door to me giving massages than a dog groomer, frankly, but that's just me. But I, I think that there's a lot of people in the city that offer massage out of their home, and I think it should be allowed.
Thank you. Eric?
I was going to ask is, if there's a difference between having a room in your home designated as the massage room versus having a portable massage table that you take and perform massages at somebody's house? So is that the at-home portion?
Yeah, these are only.
That's a problem? Or can, can it be, somewhere to travel from Denver to come give me a, a massage? Is that something that couldn't take place in my home? Because that's.
This is for at-home businesses. So if you have people coming into your house, if they're going to your house, I believe that's not restricted by these codes.
Correct.
Okay, so it's only for, if you're having, you know, customers coming in, which is, it's the impact on your neighbors as opposed to you going to somebody's house? Other discussion, I feel like we probably want to.
Yeah.
Talk about massage if we want to agree to keep it or remove it from this prohibited list.
You'll stay on that topic or?
Let's, let's stay on that topic real quick here and see if we can get that worked through, and then we can go to any other topics.
I don't think we should be removing it until we, unless we want to talk to the Inglewood police. I think that, I happen to know that Inglewood has had a hard time keeping massage parlors from offering sex, and I think this committee's a little naive. And then I think a lot of people would be very upset, a lot of homeowners would be very upset to learn that Inglewood allows everybody to open massage parlors in their basement. I know that it, it is an opportunity for people to make money as a massage therapist, and they can go to people's home and bring their table, and I think that's where we should leave it. But that you're opening a. And I think that's where we should leave it. But that you're opening a bigger door than you know. And that um, the police would probably be very upset if we did this.
I have a feeling if. Probably not registering their business.
Yeah.
Uh, just gonna throw that one out there. But uh, other thoughts?
I mean, I wonder if, if requiring them to maybe present or, you know, come before a council or something before they open makes everyone aware of who actually is running a business legally?
If you remove it from the prohibited use list, it'd be allowed by right, and they wouldn't have to go before anybody.
But could it be, could it be moved to that other second tier category where they do have some kind of requirement?
We don't have another tier. It's either allowed, not allowed, or you can change the criteria. That's the way the, the draft is.
Just number of customers or something like that that you would change?
Right, so these, yeah, so the things that were in this, this chart that I was kind of going through for performance standards, so appearance, employees, location of activity, traffic, um, sales, equipment signage. Um, you could, you could ask for special exceptions for those, but that's what you're limited to are those, those performance standard criteria.
I mean, I'd vote to strike it. If we wanted to vote on a recommendation.
You mean allow for?
Yeah, strike it from the prohibited list. That's what I would, if we were gonna make a recommendation or vote to make a recommendation, that's what I would do.
Can we do an informal vote on, on whether to allow or disallow? Uh, Eric, I'll start with you. Is that allowed, Nancy?
Well, before we. You can do a consensus.
Okay.
I'd first like to say that it would, in my eyes, would make sense to follow the city attorney's advice. And knowing that there's other things coming down from the state of Colorado. We really don't know what we're getting ourselves into. And I, I think this could probably, probably be revisited at some point. Should there be a.
Some sort of change.
A real need for massage parlors, in-home massage parlors.
I guess, real quick, is, does, do you have recommendations, Sergio, on, on whether?
I can tell the board that the city will have to implement additional regulations revolving massage facilities in conjunction with the county.
Regardless of whether it's allowed or disallowed?
Yeah, HB twenty-four thirteen seventy-one is essentially mandating that certain requirements be imposed. Some of those requirements are mandatory background checks for the massage therapists themselves and all employees. And just a bunch of different other requirements that the um state has decided that is a matter of mixed state and local concern. While the city will still be able to have to regulate these businesses, they'll have to comply with state um mandates on how that regulation looks.
So Eric, your thoughts then?
If you're asking for a consensus, I would say to, to leave it as is, as a prohibited in-home use.
Okay.
In home occupation.
Thanks. Aaron?
Yeah, I'd strike it.
So allow? Okay, dude.
I would probably also strike it.
I'm sorry.
So allow. Okay.
David, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I would allow it.
Yeah, you know, the city has to fi- hire staff if we were to allow it. So I'm gonna say no, continue to prohibit it.
I would like to allow it.
Uh, allow.
Where are we at numbers-wise?
You have four commissioners. Uh, the consensus for them is four to allow.
Four to allow and to disallow?
And to leave it as Eric and Brenda?
Yeah. Honestly, I think I'd lean towards that. So four, three, it would, it would, I would, I would strike it, I think, just for some of the reasons that Brenda had mentioned and uh regulations and the reality that's gonna come back down. But um, that's why we are trying to do the consensus. So uh, consensus being that we would allow through massage therapy to no longer be a prohibited use at this time. So that would be one change. Now, other topics uh for conversation?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a definition of um natural medicine?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll defer that one to the, to the second half.
Okay.
Um, so you'll, you'll have a whole presentation on natural medicine to make that. Yeah, that portion unfortunately has to be added into this one just because they're in the same sections of the code.
Got it.
Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll get into all of that.
Okay. And then I do have one other question. Um, for the um special exceptions, it requires the homeowner or representative. Is the intent of the code to only allow these uses for owner occupants to run a business out of a home?
So, you know, they, they could just have somebody else doing that, that hearing for them.
I'm specifically asking if renters are allowed to run a business out of the home that they occupy.
Yes, but they have to have approval from the homeowner. So that's where the, where representative comes in.
Okay.
The, the, um, someone has to sign on the homeowner's behalf, but the homeowner has to approve that the renter can do this.
Okay.
Um, so that's where that.
I was just reading that as a representative of the homeowner, but really, the business owner is, yeah. I totally get the approval from the, from the, the um, the building owner. Okay, just to be clear. Thanks.
I had a question on the special exemption also. Uh, if there should be a limitation for the approval, like is there a timeline? Like where it's approved for five years or something as opposed to in perpetuity? Uh, was there any consideration of, of whether that would, until it sale? Um, was there any consideration? Is that just too much of a burden? Um, any reason why you would or would not want to have any sort of limitation on that timeline?
Yeah, uh, so there, there isn't anything listed in there. Um, and I don't think we, I don't know if we talked about it really during the commission meeting and back in July. Um, you know, certainly if you wanted to add something like that, um, you know, I think as far as, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, as far as conditional uses, but I don't think they have a timeline. Um, I mean, the main thing is, you know, as far as, they still have to meet all the requirements. If they, if they decide to, you know, you know, shirk one of those responsibilities and go above and beyond what they're allowed to do, then that, you know, can get that conditional use voided, um, if there's a problem that arises from that. Certainly if you want to add a, you know, a timeline, you can, but um, I don't think there's one for conditional uses.
Yeah, I don't know that I do. I just wasn't sure if there was any sort of consideration or whether we should consider that. Doesn't sound like there's really a need for that, though, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, personally, I think that, that nuisance cases will probably cover most of what the concerns for that would be. Um, but, yeah.
The other thing I, I wanted to say is that we do have a process built in that says if, if one is approved and they're not meeting the conditions of their approval, the staff can bring that approval back to you to have it voided. And then we would void their business license after the fact. So there is a route, if, if someone is not taking care of business the way they're supposed to, we do have kind of a, a way that we can pull it back where we would bring a public hearing back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Awesome. And I think that's, you know, that limited, unlimited approval is kind of, you know, seems a little dicey, but it sounds like you've already thought that through, so that's great. Other thoughts, questions? I did have one other one just for the outdoor um signage or outdoor space that you can, uh, did we discuss why that was only Friday through Sunday for allowance of that?
Yeah, um, so there, that also had, you know, some lengthy discussions at July meeting that had a lot of, a lot of, um, a lot of options. Um, so we looked at um surrounding cities, and this seemed pretty similar to what a lot of them have. Um, some of the other portions that were tossed around were, you know, a certain quantity of days per year that you could have. So maybe, you know, ten days a year that you can do these pop-up stands. Um, I think as far as staff are concerned is it's a lot easier to regulate, oh, you're out on a Thursday, that's not allowed up. You're out on a Friday, that is allowed. Um, but if, you know, you wanted to go the option of limiting it to a certain quantity of days that these could do, that was also something that the commission uh talked about.
Limiting to a quantity of days is very hard from a tracking perspective.
Yeah.
So the way we looked at these situations is we give them the rules and just let folks abide by the rules. It's much easier than saying you can operate ten days out of the year. And then if Will's on vacation and somebody doesn't count a day, then we miss a day, and then we have someone complaining. So it's harder to do that um from an enforcement perspective of the number of days a year, especially if they're not required to get any specific type of permitting to do it.
There, did you have a thought there? Okay, okay. Uh, I believe that's it for questions for you.
I'll turn it over to Brian for the second half of the presentation.
Thank you. But wait, there's more.
Yeah. Where do you, oh, here we go. I got it.
So my portion is um a little bit drier. So in November of twenty twenty-two, Proposition one twenty-two, access to natural psychedelic substances, was approved by the people of Colorado. Um, and in May of twenty twenty-three, Senate Bill twenty-three two ninety, natural medicine regulation and legis- led legalization was signed into law. Um, so this legislation allows for the supervised use of natural medicines at state licensed facilities, uh, referred to in Title sixteen as natural medicine healing centers. And the operation of businesses involved in the cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of the natural medicines, referred to in Title sixteen as natural medicine cultivation facilities, natural medicine product manufacturers, and natural medicine testing facilities. So kind of why this ended up here today. The state, when they approved Senate Bill twenty-three ninety, and Sergio, correct me if I say anything wrong. There was also a committee assigned to creating the rules for natural medicine use in the state of Colorado and how it was gonna operate. Um, what we knew from a municipal perspective is that we had to have rules in place by the end of this year. Because as of January one, twenty twenty-five, these businesses can start operating and licensing with the state. We have to have our land use rules put into place prior to that so that we have a place for them to go. Um, as a city, we are not allowed to prohibit them completely. We also cannot create um re- re- requirements or restrictions that are so restrictive that they could not find a place to operate. So um, what happened was the home occupations was trailing along. And one day, I think we were getting ready for the public, public hearing that we had notified originally for August, I believe. We were looking at August after your last work session, and the natural medicines regulations kind of fell in our lap. Part of them overlapped because you saw those sections in Chapter four, which is all of our land use uh sections or permitted uses, permitted use tables. So we had to pause home occupations to add natural medicine uses in there so that we would only have to do this one time. Otherwise, we would have to have waited until November or December to start the natural medicine process. And that would have left us open for the first couple of months of twenty twenty-five. So in a very roundabout way, that is why we paused for a little bit and brought these in. Um, so again, local governments can't prohibit natural medicines, medicine uses. Um, local governments can en- enact time, place, and manner restrictions. Um, but we cannot be unreasonable or conflict with the state law. Um, as I said, the state law intends to begin, the state intends to be, begin issuing licenses at the beginning of twenty twenty-five. So we have to have our land use portions in place before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so what you'll see in our code as far as changes is a um land use category. Previously or currently is called recreation and medical marijuana uses. The proposal is to now create recreational and medical marijuana and natural medicine uses. Um, and create those four land uses in there. Their permitted abilities are very similar to those that were allowed for medical marijuana. Um, so you'll notice a lot of similarities between how medical marijuana was allowed um in two thousand and eleven and then now how we're allowing very similar uses now, or these types of uses now. Um, we add the specific use standards. Uh, in districts where natural medicine uses are enabled shall comply with the following. All natural medicine uses shall comply with state licensing and regulations and requirements and City of Inglewood licensing and regulations and requirements. And natural medicine uses shall not be permitted as a home occupation. The definitions are set up very similar to how medical marijuana definitions were set up in the past, and that we just refer back to the enabling legislation. So that if there's any changes at the state level, we don't have to continuously come back to our boards and commissions and change our rules to match their rules. We just refer back to their rules. And the same thing with the definition. Um, the definition is likely, or the natural medicines. So right now, there's two medicines, psilocybin.
Oh, man. Brian, can I interrupt you real quick? I just want to make sure, are we still recording? Do we, is this still part of the public? Okay, it looked like the Zoom, something's going on with that. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're still in compliance. Great. Okay. Go ahead, right? Sorry about that.
No, you're okay. Let me pull these up. Think the question earlier was what is the definition of natural medicine? So we refer back to uh this enabling legislation. Natural medicine means the following substances, psilocybin or psilocin. Um, in addition to the substances listed in subsection twelve A of the section, natural medicine includes, and don't um, don't get upset if I butcher the names of these medications. Dimethyltryptamine, um, if recommended by the board and approved by the director and the executive director of the state licensing authority for inclusion on or after June first, twenty twenty-six. Um, ibogaine, if recommended by the board and approved by the director and the executive director of the state licensing authority, or mescaline, if recommended by the board and approved by the director and the executive director of the state licensing authority for inclusion on or after June first, twenty twenty-six. And that's just from the state legislation.
So is the state calling us uh natural medicine?
Yes. That's how the original, um, the original legislation went through was, um, I don't know. I can, I can kind of recall about two years ago, having folks outside of different um grocery stores asking about this type of legislation. Um, and now it's come to fruition.
If you look up natural medicines, you get uh ginkgo and tamarac, uh lavender and chamomile?
Right, they're not talking about those. They're talking about the ones specifically listed in the state legislation, which are psilocybin um and psilocin to start. And then they'll have a second round that may come in two years, uh, depending on whether or not they choose to include it. So we, instead of being specific to each type of medicine, they just get lumped into the large natural medicine category.
But this, the state actually says natural medicine.
Natural medicines, that's the name of their law. Access to natural psychedelic substances is one. And the natural medicine regulation and legalization law was the other.
How about nationally?
How about what?
Nationally.
It, it was a state law, not a national federal law.
Because uh, a natural medicine is very deceiving to me.
I don't know if we're here to define.
I don't, I don't have anything on that argument.
I think we have to comply with state laws as, as a city under.
Right.
The regulations of the state.
You gotta think of.
I understand that you might have some um personal differences with it, much like probably many people have with the medical marijuana versus it's still being a sage or category two or category one drug, but it has to be regulated per the state. So therefore, we have to figure out how to regulate it to meet the criteria of the state.
So Inglewood is a, uh, what do you call it? A self-rule or whatever?
Home, home rule.
Home rule. So that doesn't cover uh doing our own regulations on this?
We are doing our own regulations on this. Now, the fact that it's called natural medicines only is there because that's what the state calls it. And we don't have any reason to sit there and rename things and just refer back to the state because that causes more confusion. So the state calls it natural medicine, we call it natural medicine. Our, our limitations are that we can, we have to allow it. So as a city, we cannot prohibit it. And we cannot recreate regulations that are super restrictive towards it. So they have to be reasonable. Very similar to what happened with medical marijuana in twenty eleven. You can't just say no. You have to say, okay, we'll allow this somewhere, and this is our portion of where it will be allowed.
So okay, so we can call medical, uh, medical marijuana, uh, natural tobacco?
We call it medical marijuana. Yeah, I mean, the state has defined it as medical marijuana. It's the, the state definition for it.
The state definition is a capital term. There's capital letters that are meaning it's a defined term by their definition. You can't interchange that with lowercase natural medicine, what you might get at Sprouts or Whole Foods. Like, it's a, it's a defined term.
Attorney wanted to speak real quickly. Look like, Sergio?
Go ahead, Sergio.
Um, just to point everyone's attention, the definition is actually in your packet. It's on page one fifty-four of what I'm looking at. Thirteen A, natural medicine.
Of our packet.
Means the following. And, yeah, I mean, we're just going with what the state named it. The state, it was passed by voter initiative. So after the voters approved it, the state had to basically make up rules and adopt it.
Now, their choice of terms might not have been the best, in our opinion, but unfortunately, we're not here to discuss or debate the, the term that has been placed, which is called natural medicine in capitals, as Aaron kind of defined. So we do have to, as the planning zoning board, define when and where it can be used without undo.
We're more just about the where.
Where, okay.
The, the when issues would come in Title V, which are licensing. So if they want to apply any, you know, you can only work from 8 to 5 Monday through Friday, that would come in a licensing portion, which doesn't come before this board. The only thing that comes before this board is the where, and that's where the zoning comes into play.
So what is Inglewood's regulations on, like pot shops are, that were limited to, what, three per city, for the city?
No, the, the marijuana uses have similar regulations to this. I'm not sure exactly how many there are. Currently, I know there were a few, I believe there were a few that, you know, in the same instance, we didn't get laws in place ahead of time, and there were some that came in that are now basically grandfathered and can exist. So that's the importance of this, is we have to get these laws in place ahead of January 1, 2025, because that's when they can start licensing, and once they start, we can't, you know, it's harder for us to get regulations in place.
Was there any restrictions on, like medical marijuana, I believe, on like spacing or something like that? And do we have similar, and would that be part of this code?
They're, they're in the license, I believe they're in the licensing portion of the code.
Is that, do we need to-
That doesn't come, that doesn't come, okay. Just straight to council.
So that, that goes straight to council? So limitations on spacing and things like that, or proximity to schools or things like that, is that correct, Sergio? Are you, did you want to have a thought there?
Oh, yeah, no, the, the where, manner, what time and all that, that's going to go under Title V. Those are in the works.
And there are state, state required minimum spacing requirements. I think they're a thousand feet from-
The enabling legislation does have, does place requirements, distance requirements and other requirements in the businesses, and they must be licensed by the state licensing authority.
Does this mean that natural medicine retail stores are going to be in Inglewood and stuff?
So they're, and this is what I understand of the state law, they're administration facilities, sort of like a medical office, rather than just a retail shop where you can go buy it.
So it's not recreational, per se? I think I'm, I'm curious actually to go beyond that, because, you know, if you've got medical now, just like with marijuana yet-
Sorry, you're going to have to speak up, I can't.
With marijuana, you had medical marijuana, and now you have recreational, doesn't seem like a huge issue, makes a lot of tax money, right? My question is, why is, why is natural medicine psychedelics being limited to only use in the facility? Because let's be honest, everyone knows someone who's taken mushrooms, and lots of people are going to appreciate using these things in the outdoors. It's just a fact. So the idea that it's limited to use at a state licensed facility, to me, is a bit strange, because people are going to continue to pursue illegal, illegal use of it if we don't allow for purchasing and use on your own whims.
And I appreciate where you're coming from on that. I think we have to follow the state regulations that they've placed, much like you had said, like with medical marijuana, does that change in five years? Who knows as they realize, you know, some of the, the benefits, some of the drawbacks that are, that are going to happen, but I don't think that's our place to regulate what, what that is, even though it's noted what you're, what you're saying. And go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, no, I'll just further clarify. That's how they got the voters to vote on it. That was in the amendment that voters vote on it, that would you allow this kind of use if it were under supervised use in the facility? So there's not a retail component of the state law yet, but we're just preparing for these facilities to open up in the meantime, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're not preparing for if in five years there's a retail component. Some cities may choose to do that. We're not, we're not doing that now. We're just preparing for the one that we know is coming. I will tell you, we have at least five, six other laws that we have to go through our new, brand new code to adjust for other things in the next few months. So this is just number one. Just, you know, the state passed a new law two years ago, they passed a new bill last year, and now we've got the rules that these businesses have to abide by, and we're just trying to do our piece. So every land use that's in there has actually come straight from that enabling legislation. We don't change the names of anything. The only thing that I've seen other cities do from a land use side is they'll just say natural medicine uses, and they'll categorize everybody as the same thing. We just try to be really specific to what's already in there.
Thank you for this information. I, I don't know if it was really intended to not incite any discussion, because I think this is going to be a very interesting topic instead of a dry.
Any discussion is good discussion.
Yes. Yeah. Any other things that you wanted to present on real quick, because we're kind of in the middle of-
No, no, I, mine is, my portion is done.
Okay, so realistically, it's that, can you go back to that table? Just the inclusion of, in addition to recreational and medical marijuana, we're adding the and natural medicine, and then defining those locations in, in this land use table is, and then some other definitions, but go ahead, Carl.
So the occupation thing that we covered earlier-
Yeah.
That's been worked on since May or even earlier than that. Is, is the natural medicine going to piggyback on that?
That's exactly what we're doing right now.
So we worked on that for like, um, three quarters of a year, and this is getting thrown on the, you know, right at the last minute.
Yeah. It's not last minute. I can assure you that as staff, we've been working on it for quite a while. But most of the work has been waiting, or part of it has been waiting for the state to release the rules. So we've been trying to update our code or create drafts and try to identify districts where it seems to be appropriate, based on what we've done in the past, but it's kind of been a hold and wait. And so the way that it happened, it just, by happenstance, you know, the home occupation regulations were kind of going in, and this popped up, and we said, hey, we have to combine them, because there's two sections that overlap in Chapter 4. So if one portion of Chapter 4 is being updated, I can't come back and update another piece of it at the same time, just because the way that we have to notify it and we have to have a code that's completely adopted before I can change another part of it. So instead of waiting until late October, early November to start natural medicines, we chose to piggyback them together. Plus, they have that one piece of crossover that says no natural medicines in home occupations. Kind of dovetails, but that's, it's, it's just funny timing, is why they got-
I've never heard of natural medicine, till now.
The risk of, of not including it now also then means that the regulation, they, much like Brian was mentioning, some of the initial medical marijuana shops kept opening up because we didn't have the proper restrictions in where they could go, and then once they're there, it's harder to have them leave. So if we don't include this now, we could have that same situation if we don't define, make these definitions of where they can go.
Yeah.
So I think there, well, I understand what you're saying, and I think you bring up a, a good point, and I think it does make sense to include that with this.
Pot shops were talked about for probably two or three years before they were approved. Long time.
Well, this, this state regulation was, has been out there for a number of years now, and it's been talked about, and, and whether, I understand that it hasn't been brought forth as part of this revision. It does have overlap and has some, I, I think, if we don't include it now, which I, I think, I don't think you're saying, but you were asking, if we don't, then we'd have to wait to finish all the Chapter 4 revisions, go through the rest of the processes to get Chapter 4 approved, then come back after it's been approved and re-discuss this whole thing, which would lead us in a gap of January 1 until whenever we got that approved, where there wouldn't be any regulation of where, where it goes, which then we'd be against the state statutes, and, and I think that would leave us open in a position that we don't want to be in, whereas now we can at least define it if we want to come back and have some additional revisions to that. I think that's something we can do, but at least we have these terms defined, and, and based on the medical marijuana and the other restrictions that we have here, it makes sense to me where, where they've been placed, yeah.
Yeah, my concern is safety. I mean, for pot shops, I was, I was supporting pot shops for, forever, and nobody could come up with a dollar amount on what they would bring to Inglewood. And I figured it out. I, I came up with $500,000 a year at the time. And when they put it on the election ballot, they had $507,000 on it. I was off $7,000. Some people were off $500,000, but that was pretty close. But there's a, back in 2014, there was Richard Kirk. He lives in, lived in Observatory Park, and he took edible marijuana, and he, he freaked out. He started hallucinating, and he got a gun out of his safe, and he told his wife to shoot him. Please shoot me, I'm, I'm going crazy. And so she called 911, and by the time they, they got there to, to see what was going on, he had shot his wife. So he's, he's now in prison for 30 years, and that was edible marijuana. Psychedelic mushrooms are much stronger than that. So what are, what are the safety measures for, how, how are they going to sell it?
So this isn't a selling, there's healing centers where they have to be under the use, if I'm not, or under the direction of a medical professional or a licensed professional?
Licensed professionals.
So is that correct, Sergio? So-
Yes, it has to be, though, they can use the product at a licensed facility under the supervision of a licensed professional, under the state's licensing regulations that they came out with.
So there's no sale of the psychedelics? It is a use in a licensed medical facility, which I, I think provides some of those safeguards? Does it provide all of them? I don't know, but it, I think, provides some of them.
And the potency of mushrooms, is that going to skyrocket like marijuana did?
We don't know. I'm sorry, Chair, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Martinez has been-
Oh, sorry. I've been looking this way, I-
That's all right. I have a question for Brian. If we do not enact these, or make these changes around natural medicine on January 1, would these four facility types be allowed in all zone districts? If we didn't do anything?
I'll have to look into that.
What is, I mean, the state just says we have the ability, the cities have the ability to restrict the zone districts.
But also have to have the regulations in place by January 1.
Well, the, the reason you want to have the regulations in place is that the licenses can start being issued on that date. If we don't have an area where we say, here's where you're allowed, we run the risk of them being able to go essentially in any zoning district. So yes, you do want to have the rules in place. Now, I will say, I, this is not an argument on what we feel is right or wrong for the use of natural medicines. That happened in 2022.
Yeah.
When the state had the election and people voted yes. So that's not what we're here to talk about today. What we're here to talk about is where will we allow this in the city? Because we have to. So that, that is the big discussion, whether it's right or wrong, not our philosophical beliefs, because we all have them. I will, I can tell you that. It's just where can we allow this? Where do we think it is good, okay to allow this?
And what is the risk if we don't define that? And I think that's a bigger risk than, than not, and I think that's where you're going here.
Potentially. If we don't do anything and we sit on our hands saying that this is not good enough, that we're afraid of, of these natural medicines, and we don't want them anywhere, and we don't do anything, then they could be anywhere. But if we do this now, we can restrict them to M2, MUs, and I districts, right? Okay, and it's not the use of them, it's these facilities can go in those places.
Brenda, did you have something else?
No, no. Sergio has his light on.
Yeah, so essentially to answer your question, the enabling legislation, which was the voter pass initiative, and the state just kind of made it happen after the voters approved it, it just provides that the city and municipality may regulate time, matter, place restrictions. We cannot ban them. So without establishing some sort of regulations, yeah, they'd just be able to open up shop up.
Yeah, okay. Does that, can this satisfy your questions there, Carl? And, and trust me, I understand the, the concern, and it's, it's a good conversation to have. Again, we're not debating the merits of, of natural medicine versus not having natural medicine, but we are trying to provide, you know, the regulations that the state has requested, so.
No, we just need to head it off before something happens. We need to try to figure out what's going to happen and then try to avoid it.
And that's why I think we should make sure we include it at this time.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think also, to be fair, you know, taking one anecdote from, I think you said 2014, I think it paints a new thing that the voters approved in kind of a weird light, considering you could look at probably 1,000x of bad impacts of alcohol that's fully legal all over the place. So just because it's new, I think it's important to be cautious about the scare tactics of one bad story, because I think it sets it up for kind of a bad perspective for everyone who may not have preconceived notions about it. So I would just ask to be open-minded about it, because I think a lot of people are benefiting from things, including, you know, veterans that use it for PTSD. So I think there's a lot more to it than one bad instance, that's all.
Yeah, the PTSD, it's very effective for that. A lot of people are getting a lot of help because of that.
And other addictions and things. So I think great conversation, really appreciate the presentation. Was there any other items that you wanted to present to us?
I have none left.
Okay. In that case, I think we close the public hearing?
I need a motion, please. As long as the commission's done asking questions of staff.
I think we can ask clarification questions, but I need, but basically, yeah, so any, any additional questions of staff? Anyone? No? Okay, then motion to close the, the public hearing, 2024-01?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
For the vote?
Okay, Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed.
All right, so we can now continue discussions on, on the items presented tonight, the revisions to the code. Any additional thoughts or, or questions that anybody wants to ask or discuss? We can ask clarification questions of staff, but anything, does that mean everyone is in favor of presenting and approving the changes as presented by staff?
Do you want a motion?
No, this is still part of the conversation. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I don't know what the form of amendment or recommendation or whatever, but again, the one point of, that we had of consensus was about to remove massage therapy from the prohibited list of home uses.
For that reminder, Aaron, okay. Any other-
And Sergio, please correct me on procedure. I believe we do have to have a motion on the table for them to discuss. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So yes, we need a motion.
To strike that, right?
You need whatever motion the commission wants. You then have discussion, then we'll vote.
So we need to move-
Yes.
No, we need to move the approval of the changes to, are we changing?
2024-01.
Thank you. With the one recommendation to strike massage therapists as prohibited and make them allowable use. That work?
It does, thank you. Any second? No, thank you. Okay, I think we already had kind of a, a resolution that came together. It was four to three on moving to remove the restriction on massage in household uses so that it is now no longer on the prohibited list. Okay? Okay.
I just, I think staff did a great job, and, you know, this is, this affects people's livelihoods and, and how they make a living and how they support their household. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy with where we landed.
Okay. I think at this point, we would have any findings of fact, which I think if anybody has any thoughts on how this supports our, kind of our, our current, you know, work at home, live-work kind of environment, I think is a, is a good one here. We're trying to support. Um, live, work kind of environment, I think is a, is a good one here. We're trying to support, you know, the members of, of the Inglewood public. So, um, I think that's, you know, uh, it, it makes sense to not restrict a certain type of profession. Just because of some of the challenges associated with some of those things. So with that, um, I guess we can go ahead and vote on, on that move.
Okay, Ms. Austin?
Yes, and thank you, staff. You do a great job as always. Thank you very much.
Mr. Montiel?
No.
No? Okay, uh, I'm sorry. No, this is on the entire, so the motion, just to clarify, is, is to recommend case.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four dash zero one, home occupations and natural medicines to city council for approval with the following amendment. Which would be to strike massage therapy as a prohibited use.
Would, would you can vote no? I mean, that, yeah.
No, I vote yes for that.
I'm sorry, yes over the big. Sorry, let me switch you real quick so I don't forget. Uh, Mr. Adams?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Hubka?
We're voting on the whole amendment, right? I mean, the whole.
We're voting on the entire motion, which includes that, the amendment. There's no amended motion. This is the main motion that's going to have the one, uh, item.
Yes, I'm gonna yes, okay.
Thank you. You're fine. Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Well, again, thank you, staff, uh, for that presentation, um.
I'm sorry, hold on one.
Chair Hagerty, did you get a vote? Did Michelle, I don't think Michelle voted either, but that's okay.
I'm sorry. Chair, let's go back. Chair Hagerty, how do you vote?
I'll vote, uh, yes.
My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Isom. It still passes.
It does, yes. All right, um, with that, I think we get to move to staff's choice.
Um, the only item I have is we have a few cases that are possibly coming up in the next few months. Um, I think Nancy reached out to everyone and it doesn't sound like we'll have a quorum for the November fifth meeting. Is there, um, any thought to having, since we only have one meeting in November? And now that one would not happen. Is there a thought of having a meeting on a special date like November? Trying to do my.
No, no, the next, your next meeting is November nineteenth.
Are you asking if we should have a different meeting in November nineteenth?
Well, if the, if the commission is willing to meet on the nineteenth. Um, so if, 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 for instance, we have a case that comes at the end of October. They would then have to wait until the beginning of December to have their finding of fact read, which pushes their public hearings at council back a little while. Um, and also can kind of stack things on your agenda as well, if we have other cases. Um, so we're just trying to, if we're going to take a meeting out, we want to put one back. So we're just asking if y'all are okay, uh, meeting on that date? Or if you know already off the top of your head, I'm not going to be here for the entire month of November. So don't do it at all. We'll wait until December. So we're just trying to gauge.
Nancy, we're clear. We do, will not have a quorum on November fifth.
We will not.
Okay.
So as Brian said, your bylaws indicate that you hold, have one meeting in November and only one meeting in December. So as Brian said, if we move the November meeting to the nineteenth, and then your next meeting would be December third.
Brian, do you think that it's necessary for another meeting? You see stuff on the horizon?
I mean, if, if a case doesn't come to fruition, we're not going to make you come here and just so we can tell you to go back home. We would have to, you know, request that the chair cancel the meeting. We just want to gauge whether the commission as a whole thinks that they could make it to a November nineteenth meeting. In the event that we have something that comes up.
Yes.
Yeah, I can make it.
Yes.
And I guess just a question, because normally we would have two a month, but our, our laws say that, by law say that we'd only have one a month. So we normally have in the beginning and we don't have the nineteenth, but yeah, let's, let's add it to the nineteenth then.
Those things, Christmas and Thanksgiving kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shut them down, so.
Okay. So yes, I, we're rolling.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, staff? Uh, attorney's choice?
Oh, nothing for me.
Thank you also for your insight today, Sergio. Appreciate the information.
Not a problem.
Right. Uh, I'll go commissioner's choice. I'll start with Carl.
Uh, on the, uh, the PTSD, the Inglewood History Society is having a talk on that next Tuesday. And, uh, be a talk at the, uh, library at two thirty and across the, uh, in the Sparks area over there. It's on the other side of the fountain. It'll, it'll be six thirty. And it's, uh, the guy created a foundation, um, Mountain, Mountain Vista, Mountain. Mountain Valor Foundation. And he raises money and takes wounded veterans on camping trips, fishing trips. And hunting trips and, uh, it's going to be probably an interest, interesting talk. And I will not bring up medical marijuana. Or natural marijuana, natural medicine.
Awesome. Thank, thank you for that information, Carl. Michelle?
Uh, I don't have anything, but I actually have, uh, donated to another organization with that PTSD thing, which is the hyperbaric association. Where they put them in those chambers that often, oftentimes help with the two, but it's a big problem. So thanks for, that sounds like an interesting talk. Otherwise I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, so I can make November nineteenth and then I'm traveling. I'm taking a big trip to Thailand. But I get back December second. I will try to get to the December third meeting. I did click no, only because I'm going to be exhausted with jet lag. So that's kind of a we'll see. Um, thank you. That's all.
Have fun. David?
Nothing for me.
Aaron?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
Eric?
I have nothing further.
I am good as well. Uh, thank you again, staff and, and Sergio and all of our staff and everyone here that supports us. So, uh, with that, have a great night.